Please rise for the invitation. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to implement a vision of unity that extends to the hearts and needs of all stakeholders. As Christmas approaches, a season based on love, peace, and charity, allow us to refocus our hearts on doing your will. May the message of Christmas and the love it brings touch the lives of all students, employees, and families. We ask all this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Let's let me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
The floor is called. Mr. Wright?
Here. Dr. Gia.
Here.
Ms. Babbitt.
Here.
Ms. Petita.
Here.
Mr. Duplantis.
Here.
Ms. Boujwa.
Here.
Mr. LaFon.
Here.
Ms. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Shoffenchen.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Item two, award recognition. A, LaFouche Parish School District Student, Staff, and Group Recognitions. And that would be Ms. Bolton.
Welcome. It's our privilege tonight to be able to recognize our district principal of the year and also our outstanding school support employees from each of our schools. And this is one of my favorite nights because we get to see all the roles and all the people who touch the lives of our students and staff every day. So our school support employees includes our custodial staff, our clerical staff, our paraprofessionals, our cafeteria staff, and bus drivers. So everyone who touches those lives, just even for a little bit each day, makes a huge difference, and we couldn't do it without everyone that's included in this room. And so we're going to get started tonight. Mr. Martin is going to announce our principal of the year.
Okay. The principal of the year is sitting right here.
No, I'm sorry.
What's that?
That's me. Never mind.
Oh, God. You made a mistake. You got to catch.
Yes, I know. But I am too, so we're in a bad, bad shape.
Here with us tonight, and also we want to celebrate Ms. Casey Sheeran. Something embracing water, right?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Good. Yeah.
And Ms. Hodson is going to begin with our elementary division school support employees.
All righty. From Bayou Blue Elementary, Tana Henry. From Bayou Blue Upper Elementary, Emily DeRoch. From Bayou Buff, Azadea Ozzy Ottman. From Chag Day Elementary, Mitzi Rodreg. From Cut Off Elementary, Laney Guidry. From St. Washington, Naomi Bates. From Galliano Elementary, Kathy Lafour. From Golden Meadow Elementary, Adessa Paret. From Lockport Lower, Kimberly Lu. From Lockport Upper, Jade S. J. From Norah LaRose, Margaret Colley. From Raceland Lower, Nikki Treg. From Raceland Upper, Ashlyn Musso. From South LaRose Elementary, Rea Updagrath.
We may have to revisit Rea.
From St. Charles Elementary, Michelle Born. From Thibodeau Elementary, Lacy Knobkamp. From WS Lafour, Lisa Falls.
We will now move on to the middle school level. From Bayou Blue Middle School, Ava Thibodeau. From Golden Meadow Middle School, Kristy Colley. From LaRose Cut Off Middle School, Lacy Detilia. From Lockport Middle School, Tony Wallace. From Raceland Middle School, Denise Davis Beltran. From Sixth Ward Middle School, Lucy Deloitte. And from Thibodeau Middle School, Dana Bellander. We will move on to our high school division. From Central LaFouche High School, Felicia Hill. South LaFouche High School, Katrina Billiot. Thibodeau High School, Brittany Smith. And from the Career Magnet Center, Colette Alamon.
All righty. Our overall elementary winner goes to Emily DeRoch.
Our overall middle school winner is from LaRose Cut Off Middle School, Lucy Detilia. And our overall high school winner is from Career Magnet Center, Colette Alamon.
Round of applause for all the folks here. I just want to briefly echo the comments of Ms. Bolton earlier. So many behind-the-scenes heroes make school possible. Teachers get a lot of credit, as they should, but there are so many folks that make school possible, and we want to thank all the folks that are here tonight who do so often what is a thankless job for all the kids in LaFouche Parish. So thank you all so much. You're deeply appreciated, and we wish you a very, very good night. If you want to see a super exciting board meeting where we approve shorter pilings for Bayou Buff Elementary School, stick around. Otherwise, have a great night and the rest of your week, and thank you all so much. Oh, is she here? Oh, wait, 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 wait.
From South LaRose, Rea. This name is a... Rea Updagrath.
Was cane chokes a ruder?
Yes.
Thank you all so much.
Minutes, uh, number three, approval of minutes of the regular board meeting held November 5th, 2025. Your motion is Babbitt, second by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board discussion or comment? Hearing none, please vote by signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, motion carries. Number four, memorial resolutions. Ms. A, Mrs. Anne Stringer, retired teacher, Mr. Duplantis.
Ms. Anne Stringer was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on September 16, 1982 as a teacher at Bayou Blue Elementary School. Ms. Stringer transferred to Thibodeau Elementary School in 1989, serving as a special education teacher. Ms. Stringer retired on May 31, 1997, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for 15 years.
Item B, Ms. Elizabeth Perez, retired teacher, Ms. Babbitt.
Ms. Elizabeth Perez was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August 29, 1961 as a teacher at Bayou Buff Elementary School. Ms. Perez also taught at Thibodeau Elementary and South Thibodeau Elementary School during her career. Ms. Perez retired on January 12, 1991, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for 29 and a half years.
Item C, Ms. Deborah Simon, retired teacher. That would be Ms. Babbitt.
Ms. Deborah Simon was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on January 16, 1984 as a teacher at South Thibodeau Elementary School. Ms. Simon retired on July 1, 2010, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for 26 and a half years.
If I may, Madam President, Ms. Simon was not only a teacher at Thibodeau Elementary when I was there, but also grew up with her daughter, and just want to say, I know she's going to be sadly missed. She was a very genuine person, really kind-hearted spirit, so I know she'll miss.
And I taught with Debbie times. She was just, she was so compassionate. She loved her students and just never got rattled, really. You know, she was, she just was a very pleasant person all the time and a good teacher. Item D, Mr. Lloyd Guidry, retired principal. And that would be Ms. Shoffenchen.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd Guidry was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on July 1, 1958, as a teacher at Golden Meadow High School. Mr. Guidry was a charter member of the faculty of the new South LaFouche High School when it opened in 1966. Mr. Guidry spent the last decade of his career in administration. He served as administrative assistant, assistant principal, and principal of South LaFouche High School. Mr. Guidry retired on July 1, 1993, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for 35 years. And if I might say, you know, Mr. Guidry was assistant principal when I attended South LaFouche High School, and I got to know him at a personal level. He was an excellent public servant, served our church at early in prom聖church in Golden Meadows and Aquilite, and just well-loved by everyone. And I want to thank his daughter, Ms. Joan, for being here tonight, and we send our...
Thank you so much, darling.
Thank you. Mr. Henry.
I just want to echo what Buffy said. I've known Mr. Guidry pretty much all my life. He was a teacher of mine, a French teacher of mine in South LaFouche High School, and I was sharing with Joan earlier, one of the things that was always fun for Mr. Guidry was the weekend of the LSU Ole Miss game when we had our headsets on. All of a sudden, you heard, "Jake gives back the punt, and he's playing back the Billy Cannon run." And that was every year, and I think they may still do that at South LaFouche now. But he had a way of connecting with the students, and as Buffy said, he was very active in our community, and he'll be sorely missed, Joan.
Thanks to all of you. Thank you.
Item E, Mr. Van Jeremy, retired supervisor, Ms. Wells.
Mr. Van Jeremy was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on July 1, 1982, as a teacher at LaRose Lower Elementary School. On August 1, 1986, Mr. Jeremy was promoted to principal at LaRose Lower Elementary School. On January 1, 1999, Mr. Jeremy was promoted to the district staff as the Title I supervisor. Mr. Jeremy retired on February 1, 2006, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for 32 and a half years. And Mr. Jeremy was my first principal at LaRose Lower Elementary School, and I remember him being just a kind man.
He was very...
And I just want to add that I've known Mr. Jeremy and his family for a number of years, and he was dedicated to the profession, he was dedicated to his students, and he will be missed.
And I had the opportunity to work with Van at the, as Title I, as he was the supervisor, and just a gentleman and just an educator at heart, and I always admired that here we had this big, big man, and he was always with these little children at LaRose Lower, and but he just, he loved it and...
He was not scary.
No, he wasn't. Not at all. And so I know that everybody in his family, Jeremy's family, will definitely miss him.
Madam President, I move that these resolutions be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of the resolutions be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
With no objection, let the record reflect that these resolutions be adopted by general consent and will be reported on the special page of our minute book. Item five, approval of policy and academics committee recommendations as per meeting held November 19, 2025. Ms. Boujwa.
Item A, to approve revisions to policy GAAA, equal opportunity employment, so moved.
We have a second. Dr. Gia, any comment from the public? Any board questions, comments? If not, hearing none, please vote yea or nee, eh, yea.
Yea.
Yea. Any yays? Hearing none, motion carries.
Item B, excuse me. To approve revisions to policy GBA, contracts and compensation, so moved.
Motion, second by Ms. Duplantis. Any comment from the public? Any board questions or comments? Hearing none, please signify by saying yea if for.
Yea.
Nay? Motion carries.
Item C. To approve revisions to policy IDDF, education of students with exceptionalities, so moved.
Thank you. We have a motion, second by Mr. LaFon. Any public comment? Any board questions or comments? Hearing none, please vote eh, yea, like by saying, please vote yes by saying yea.
Yea.
Any nays? Motion carries.
Item D, to approve revisions to policy IDDFC, cameras in special education classrooms, so moved.
We have a motion. Have a second, Mr. Wright. Any public comment? I saw you scratched your hand.
Yeah, I thought you would have.
Any board comment, questions? Hearing none, please signify by saying yea if you're for.
Yea.
Any nays? Motion carries.
Item E, to approve revisions to policy JAA, equal education opportunities, so moved.
Thank you. Second by Ms. Shoffenchen. Any public comment? Any board comment, questions? Hearing none, if you're for the motion, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Any nays? Motion carries.
Item F, to approve revisions to policy JD, discipline, so moved.
We have a motion, seconded by Mr. LaFon. Any public comment? Any board comment or discussion? Hearing none, if you're for the motion, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Any nays? Motion carries. Item six, approval of business committee recommendations as per meeting held November 19, 2025, Mr. Duplantis.
To approve the medical plan reinsurance renewal, as presented by Mr. Buddy Leday with Gallagher Benefit Services.
Uh, no, sir, but we, it would be better if we read the full recommendation.
All right. Recommended action is to approve the medical plan reinsurance renewal. Option one, with an annual specific stop-loss deductible of $300,000, with two exceptions, as presented by Mr. Buddy Leday with Gallagher Benefit Services.
Thank you. Second by Ms. Boujwa. Any public comment? Any board questions or comments? We really discussed that at the meeting, so all in favor, signify by saying yea.
Yea.
And the opposition, so moved.
B, to approve entering into a contract with FedLogic to maximize health insurance benefits for a period of one year at a contract price of $61,776, presented by Mr. Buddy Leday with Gallagher Benefit Services, so moved.
Thank you. Second by Ms. Shoffenchen. Any public comment? Any board discussion or comment? Hearing none, please signify by saying yea if you're for. Motion.
Yea.
Any nays? Motion carries.
Item C, to award the highest, most responsible, responsive, and responsible scored vendor for E-Rate 2026, rev for both internet and LAN services, so moved.
Motion, seconded by Ms. Babbitt. Any public comment? Any board discussion or comment? I see Mr. Eddie's out in the audience. Let's, we're going to vote, and you can come up and say something if you'd like. Any, any other, any comments? Hearing none, motion, to say if you're for the motion, say, signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Any nays? Motion carries. Good, okay, Eddie.
Just like to say thank you again for the opportunity to continue to partner with you guys for the next three years, or continue to provide internet and LAN service to you. We are very grateful for that opportunity. Thanks a bunch.
Item D, to award the lowest, most responsive, and responsible bidders based on specifications, price, warranty, and availability for both laptop and desktop computers, so moved.
Motion, second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board comment or discussion? Hearing none, please, I'm sorry, you have a question?
Who was the most responsive, but it's not in the motion?
Oh, okay. Who was it?
Give me a second.
It's okay. There's only one. So there was multiple options available?
Yeah.
So there's a detachment there, and it's fairly detailed. So that's why we left it open, because with the specifications, all the different warranty options, and the needs of IT, we left it to them to choose which one would best fit the needs of the IT department.
Thank you for explaining that. Thank you for asking that, Ms. Boujwa. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, if motion, if you have motion, vote as in yea.
Yea.
Any nays? Motion carries.
Item E, to award the highest scored, most responsive, and responsible proposer, First Student, for student transportation services north, central, and south LaFouche areas, so moved.
We have a motion. Second by Mr. LaFon. Any public comment? Any board comment or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we do have two representatives from First Student, if you'd like to come up and say something.
Welcome, Ken. Good evening, lovely. Really look forward to doing business with you all, honestly. Executive children priority number one with our company, of course, and I think our record speaks for itself, but truly, truly like to thank you all for doing business with you.
Thank you, everyone. We look forward to being a true partner.
Looking forward to those rainy buses, yes. With air conditioning. Yes.
All right.
Item F, to approve entering into a contract with Falk and Winkler, CPA's Business Advisors for School Auditing Services for a period of one year at a contract price of $53,750, as presented by Mrs. Chastity Eme, Executive Director of Business Services, so moved.
We have a motion on the floor. Second by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board comment or discussion? Hearing none, if please signify if you're in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Motion carries. My brain is just a little bit off tonight. Okay, moving on to item seven, approval of land and facilities management committee recommendations as per meeting held November 19, 2025. Mr. LaFon.
Thank you, Madam President. Item A, to approve a change order request for the St. Charles Elementary School classroom addition project, so moved.
We have a motion. Second by Ms. Babbitt. Do you have any public comment? Any board discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Motion carries.
Item B, to approve a change order request for LaFouche Parish School District Hurricane Pidup, multiple locations project, so moved.
We have a motion. Second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board comment or discussion? Hearing none, if you're all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Motion carries.
Item C, to approve a little bid from HFL Demolition LLC with a base bid of $92,000 with a design fee of $11,540.
with a base bid of $92,000 with a design fee of $11,543 for a total project amount of $103,543 for the Bayou Blue Elementary School Hurricane Idap Building 500 demolition project, so moved.
That's motion, second by Ms. Sharpenchay, any public comment? Excuse me, any board comment or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, to reject a low bid from Guiding Construction due to the use of an incorrect bid form to approve a bid from Dove Group LLC with a base bid of $410,000 with a design fee of $44,848 for a total project amount of $454,848 for the 2025 boiler replacement project, so moved.
We have a motion, second by Ms. Bouchois, any public comment? Any board comment? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Item E, to amend the lease of land agreement with Edie White Catholic High School originally executed December 1st, 2024 to permit the construction of a javelin runway and throwing area within the lease premises with all costs, maintenance and liability be the responsibility of the letsee and subject to the same indemnity, insurance and compliance provisions as the original lease, so moved.
Motion, second by Ms. Babbitt, any public comment? Any board questions, comments? Hearing none, please, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item eight, new business, Dr. Giott.
To approve the high bid for hunting and fishing privileges on Section 16 Township 20, South Range 24 East, Bay Des Iletis, Iletis area. That's my, that's happened. So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Ms. Babbitt, any public comment? If not, Mr. Jeremy, would you like to explain and say it for us?
It's big. We said it's the hunting needs for it. We had some interest in it and we listed it. And this is the best bid we got on the lease.
Do you know how to say it?
Big Z.
Me z. E Z. Okay, good. Alright.
Is it big? I believe it is.
Oh, oh, no, it's okay. Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, did we have public comment? Any board comment? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
B, to approve a change order request in the credit sum of $16,762 for the Hurricane Idap Bayou Buff Elementary New School Project, reducing the pilings from 55 feet to 50 feet, so moved.
We have a motion, second by Mr. Duplantis, do you have any public comment? Any board comment? You have something, Mr. Jeremy?
Yeah, we are, not to circumvent the committee process, but this is a VE item that was able to achieve because the tests came back better than what was expected. So there's some savings we could have. It's a long lead time item, so that's why we're bringing it straight to the board. If you can get it approved tonight, he's able to actually order pilings tomorrow to continue work. Appreciate how you said it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
To adopt a resolution honoring Dr. Wade Roos as the 29th president of Louisiana State University, so moved.
Motion, second by Ms. Sharpenchay, any public comment? Any board comment or discussion? Dr. Martin, would you like to read it?
Yes, Madam President. LaFouche Parish School Board, Resolution honoring Dr. Wade Roos, 29th president of Louisiana State University. Whereas Dr. Wade Roos is a distinguished native of LaFouche Parish, Golden Meadow, Louisiana, embodying the resilience, intellect and leadership characteristics of our community. And whereas Dr. Roos is an esteemed graduate of South LaFouche High School who already first demonstrated the intellectual curiosity and academic excellence that would define his future career. And whereas, Dr. Roos furthered his education locally, becoming a proud graduate of Nichols State University, demonstrating his commitment to regional growth and the value of higher education than Louisiana. And whereas, Dr. Roos has achieved the highest level of academic administration through his appointment as the 29th president of Louisiana State University, LSU, Louisiana's flagship institution of higher learning, a position of immense influence and responsibility. And whereas, this historic moment reflects Dr. Roos's exceptional leadership and his profound commitment to educational excellence, research innovation and his unwavering dedication to serving the students and citizens of the entire state of Louisiana. And whereas, Dr. Roos's journey from LaFouche Parish and South LaFouche High School to Nichols State University culminating in the presidency of LSU serves as an extraordinary source of pride and inspiration for all citizens of LaFouche Parish and the greater Bayou region. Now therefore be resolved that LaFouche Parish School Board does hereby officially enthusiastically honor, recognize and congratulate Dr. Wade Roos on his appointment as the 29th president of Louisiana State University. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be officially reported in the minutes of this board and appropriately framed copy shall be presented to Dr. Wade Roos as a testament to the deep pride and admiration held by the community of LaFouche Parish.
Thank you, sir. Any comment now that we are, Mr. Lafont?
As a native of Golden Meadow, a graduate of South LaFouche High School, a graduate of Nichols State University and a graduate of LSU Law Center, I can't tell you how proud I am that we are able to recognize Dr. Roos in this matter. It really is important. He's a product of the public school system and it shows how our public school system works.
Thank you. Mr. Jeremy?
I've known my old friend Wado since Golden Meadow Junior High days. We actually commuted to South LaFouche High School together and are fellow graduates of the class of 1989, go Tarptons. Immensely proud of all of his accomplishments and his representation of the Bayou and this parish. And if there was ever any question about the quality of education that we provide, I think that this is proof and a testament to what we are learning and what we are instilling in our students. So I'm very proud to say that he's one of our own. Congratulations.
Mr. Bouchois?
Yes, even though he's a Tarpan, I'm still proud. I told my daughter, who sends out a shoe, she said she was going to try to go find him. I said, you tell him you're from the Bayou too. And even though you graduated from South LaFouche, we're still very proud.
Any other comments? And I'm sure he'll feel really excited about receiving this from us. Thank you, sir. Alright, moving on.
D, to consider, I'm sorry, did I vote right?
Oh, we didn't vote yet? Okay. Well, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Motion is carried. Thank you for reminding us about that.
D, to consider adopting a resolution, let me make sure I'm on the right line. Okay, adopting a resolution, appointing a member to the ITEP Committee of LaFouche Parish and authorizing the superintendent of schools to serve as its member and further authorizing the superintendent to sign, execute and administer any and all relevant documents related to the business of the ITEP Committee, so moved.
We have a motion, and a second by Mr. Duplantis. Any public comment? Any board questions or comments? Mr. Martin, you want to?
It's just a formality. Each year, a representative from the school board is selected to serve in this committee that makes the blanket approval for the parish. Especially as required.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion is carried.
E, let's see. Motion to continue as the date, time and place of the regular meetings for the LaFouche Parish School Board for 2026, being it the first Wednesday of every month at 6:00 PM in the school board office in accordance with policy BC meetings, so moved.
A motion, second by Ms. Sharpenchay, any public comment? Any board comment? Hearing none, you're in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item nine, tentative dates of future meetings. There will be no committee meetings held the month of December. B, regular board meeting Wednesday, January 7th, 2026. Item 10, election of officers. A, election of officers of LaFouche Parish School Board to serve for one year period beginning January 1st, 2026 in accordance with policy BBA, officers president, one president and two vice president. And at this time, we will hand out ballots. Okay, nomination, okay, nomination will start with ballots after. Pardon? Yeah, no, I'm just going to get my little paper out in just a second. Alright, do we have, we're going to start with president. Do we have any nominations for president? Ms. Babbitt?
I would like to nominate Dr. Dennis Giott.
So, Dr. Giott, any other nominations? Oh, okay. Do we need a second for nominations? We don't need a second. We just need to nominate and pace. Do we have, okay, do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations for president? Hearing none, we have a motion by.
So we have to move to close nominations?
Yes, okay, right. At this time, I'd like to, a motion to close the nominations. Dr. Giott, second by Ms. Bouchois, any questions or comments from the public? Any board comments? Hearing none, Dr. Giott, you are elected president, aye.
I'm certainly humbled by the opportunity to lead the board in our final term, fourth year of our term. Anyway, I appreciate y'all's confidence in me and, you know, look forward to working with everyone to continue to move us forward and continue to support all the employees and students within our school district. Thank you all.
Alright, moving on to nominations for vice president. Do we have any nominations for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Tina Babbitt.
We have Ms. Babbitt, do we have any other nominations? Ms. Bouchois?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Ms. Buffy Lynn Sharpenchay.
Alright, do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Do we have a motion to close the nominations? Ms. Babbitt, second by Mr. Wright. And at this time, will you hand out the ballots, please, ma'am? Thank you, sir. At this time, we will read on the bottom of the table. Mr. Clyde Duplantis, Ms. Gina Babbitt. Ms. Valerie Bouchois, Ms. Buffy Sharpenchay. Ms. Tina Babbitt, Tina Babbitt. Mr. Myron Wright, Mr. Myron Wright, Tina Babbitt. Mr. Henry Lafont, Ms. Buffy Lynn Sharpenchay. Mr. Dennis Giott, Tina Babbitt. Ms. Marion Fertitta, Tina Babbitt. Ms. Leslie Wells, Tina Babbitt. And Ms. Buffy Lynn Sharpenchay, Buffy Lynn Sharpenchay. We have a tally, I see a vote is six to three. At this time, we'd like to congratulate Ms. Tina Babbitt. I look forward to working with you, everybody on the board. Looking forward to a little conversation. Thank you very much. And thank you for this time considering the actual relation. And just congratulations to you. Alright, at this time, before we have turned around, we'd like, since this is our last meeting before the Christmas holidays, I want to just wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas and the happiest of years. And our teachers and our students and staff and staff here. Just hope you have a great time, just being very restful, a restful time and also just having fun and enjoying your families. So, yes, sir. No, not at all.
This just in, Santa has been spotted and Mr. Henry Lafont, front seat of his truck, right outside. Want to go over? Take a picture with Santa? Just give him the drive.
Please try. Yes, and you can put your arm around him too. There be no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all.